Madam Secretary, call the row please.
Hester, absent, Guston.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Sforza.
Here.
Dorch.
Here.
Ozzy.
Good.
Here. Approval of the agenda for May 4? And motion second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for April 20?
Who to approve?
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll go to public comment, we have some speak, Richard Noble. Richard Noble. This, okay, Richard, come on up. All right, I didn't see you there.
Hi guys, my name is Richard Noble, how are you?
Good, and you?
Counsel, community, I'm good, I'm good.
Come up here if you want.
I am doing a National Civil Rights Walk across America, I live in Palm Springs. I put my home in storage for a year and a half, and I did it, I made the decision. When I watched the tears of Wendy Walsh fall down her cheeks as she read a letter from her thirteen-year-old son the night before he committed suicide due to bullying because he was gay. I am forty-five years old, I experienced bullying at a young age, at fifteen I left home. It is a tragedy, and so for their voices, I have taken the rainbow flag and the Native American two-spirited feathers, which the Native Americans call us, and I walk in solidarity for these young people that don't have the courage to speak up to bullying and discrimination in home or in school and give them some sort of a voice. I have spent, I left March 12th, it took me thirty-six days to walk across the state of California to the Nevada border where I entered Carson City and met with Senator Parks, who greatly appreciated my presenting to the city councils, the county board of supervisors, state senators, and members of the US Congress and states and US Senate, the American Equality Bill. The American Equality Bill, I have given you each a packet, on the top of your packet is a resolution passed by the city of West Hollywood when I began unanimously supporting my pursuit of a federal sponsor to amend the 1964 Civil Rights Act to include sexual orientation and gender identity, giving the full force of the power of the law to the United States Office of Attorney General and the State Department, I mean, the Department of Justice. We need their help. So I asked that my colleague, who is with me here today, work with you to have this put on a calendar agenda item for the city of Reno to support full equality. And so that was the first, the second, the second thing is the letter from the state Senator Parks in his full agreement, as well as many other city council members and mayors and members of Board of Supervisors who are supporting my Walk Across America. And thirdly is the actual writing of the American Equality Bill drafted July 4th of 2010. It's simply, okay, and then the last thing for your enjoyment is me trekking through Walnut Creek, California, I went to high school in Danville where I left home at fifteen, and I wanted to walk through my, the county where I loved so much and had horses and grew up and went sailing with my dad on the San Francisco Bay. And so I feel loved and welcomed in the state of Nevada. Last week I spent four days at the Paiute, Walker River Paiute Indian Reservation, and I'd like to inform you that their elders named me, gave me a tribal name, Paiute name, Puittagüina. It means flash of bright colored light in sky, i.e. rainbow. I spent four days with the gathering of Native Americans, listening to their, is that my time?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to thank for the graciousness of the people of the state of Nevada who have helped me, who have welcomed me in their homes, who have fed me, and who have supported, and just one little less, I want to thank Reed High School where I spoke to a class of students today on bullying, and the Trevor Project, and the Gets Better Project, and asked them to please reach out for help.
Okay.
Suicide is not the answer, we love our kids and we want to see everybody live in equality, thank you.
Thank you very much. Fran Lane.
Mayor Bob Kachel.
You're ahead of time.
Distinguished members of the city council. Year-to-date, I just wanted to inform you that Iron Nation Motorcycle Club has donated over a hundred thousand dollars to the Nevada Military Alliance Fund because of the support of the community and the city council yourselves. We stand before you today asking a request for donations for our escorts, and we hope that you would consider that.
We will, we will take that request under consideration and probably be able to work the same thing we did last year, but we do appreciate your coming in ahead of time.
Thank you, thank you.
It helps a lot. I'm sitting here looking at both of you and I'm saying, okay, now what are these two up to today?
[laughing]
But I'm so happy when you, I know what you're doing, so this really helps us out a lot, by you coming in early.
Thank you, and we would have been in here earlier, but the city council was going through a lot of cutbacks through the course of the year, and we just didn't feel it was right for us and for donations when a lot of the firemen's and everybody else was getting laid off, so.
Well, we appreciate the request, and we will look and see what we can do because we're starting budget hearings tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
And we'll see if we can't work in some stuff to help you out, because
Great.
You do a great service, and I know what you've done to help the veterans and the people coming home and the ones we've lost, so we really appreciate it.
We also like to give the city council a plaque on, and appreciation for your support.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Not a Harley. Not a Harley?
Yeah. Now, wait a minute, now, when we do the motorcycle run, do Gino and I still get to run on the bike together in front?
I think you guys are getting a little more practice at that, I think you'll be okay, yes.
Yeah, we won't fall off of it.
[laughing] It was a good time last year, it really was.
Yes, it was.
We look forward to having you guys again.
Well, we appreciate it, and thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Having no other public comment section, I'm gonna bring it back to the table. We don't have anything on our agenda for future agenda items today, so I want to make a public comment. I want to tell you about an item I will be putting on next week's agenda. Since we're looking for another, for a new city manager, I personally do not feel it's necessary to do another search. We have right here in northern Nevada, a person who is very respected by both houses of the Nevada State Legislature, highly respected by governor, community, and business leaders that I've talked to. This person is a graduate of UNR with a degree in business administration, he was a financial analyst for the Silver Legacy, served in various positions with the state of Nevada, he is currently the director and the chief of the Budget Division for the state, he has a strong background in finance, management, and oversaw the development of Nevadaspending.com, which is the state's online checkbook, providing transparent spending and budgeting information to Nevada citizens. He also developed and managed the state government's seventeen billion biennial budget under the past two administrations. He brings a wealth of private sector and government sector knowledge of finance to the table. I know some of you have had business and community leaders ask you to speak with him, I hope you have, but if you haven't, I hope you will during this next week. Next week I will be asking the council to move forward on negotiating a contract with this individual. I hope you will join me in moving the city forward and selecting Andrew Klinger as our next city manager. At this time, Mr. Manager, would you pass out to each council member a copy of my statement and a copy of Mr. Klinger's resume? And we have a copy for the press or anybody that needs one. I'll now close the public comment section, I'll bring it back to the table. Item 86, direction, potential direction of staff regarding proposed state legislation and others matters relating to, I thought we put her at the last. Okay, come on up. Hey, you got a little son, you're looking better.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, you too. For the record, Kayden Smitsievich, Legislative Relations Program Manager, here with your update for the thirteenth week of the legislative session. I have prepared a staff report, which I hope that you all have a copy of, and would leave it to the council if there are specific bills that you want me to address. I don't have any significant results to report, those bills that we are monitoring are moving through the system, as I said last time, our next deadline, committee deadline is May 20th, and so bills are being heard in the, in the Second House. I will note that the Functional Home Rule Bill did have a hearing in Assembly Government Affairs on Monday. At this time, I believe that there's a possibility that there will be a subcommittee assigned to work on some language on that bill, but it is still alive, maybe on life support, but moving through the process. I'm certain that the council members saw the media reports from the Economic Forum this week where revenue projections did come in slightly higher, so a little bit of good news for our state. And I would note for the council that last Thursday, Mr. Knutson and I had the privilege of presenting on the city's financial circumstances to a joint meeting of the Assembly Taxation and Senate Finance Committee. They have indicated that they would like us to come back and make an additional presentation after the council has gone through your full budget deliberations and decided on our budget for the next fiscal year. There are just, there, there's lots of media reports, of course, and we want to be sure that they have the full, correct information about our current financial circumstances, and so we'll be looking forward to giving them that information in the weeks to come. And with that, I would be pleased to answer any questions on specific legislation that you may be wanting to know about.
Any questions, any members of the council wish to ask about agenda items, or any of the agenda items at the legislature? I understand they were a little rough on you, I'm very sorry for that, but we will show up with a little more force next time and be able to answer their questions. Have any bills you have any questions about?
Just one, 304, Kayden's.
Yes, Councilwoman, at this time, that bill has not yet been scheduled, it will be heard in the Assembly Legislative Operations and Elections Committee, we are working with that committee chair to get as much advance notice of the hearing on that bill as possible, and as soon as we find out that it's been scheduled for a hearing, we'll notify the council accordingly.
Any others? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to item 87, discussion and direction to staff to prepare and bring forward a moratorium ordinance prohibiting any new land use proposing fifteen or fewer slot machines and of our issuance of privileged gaming business license involving such proposed uses or matters properly relating to. We have two gentlemen that wish to speak, then I will talk to Brett Sclary. Let's see, you guys got this down pretty good, where one speaks for one, one speaks for the other, and you get to bill them twice. No, go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, good to be here. I'm here representing Golden Gate Petroleum of Nevada. Dennis O'Keefe is the owner of this business, he has multiple locations in the city of gas stations and convenience stores, been licensed multiple times with the city and with the state Gaming Control Board and Gaming Commission. Want to talk about one location that could possibly get caught up in this moratorium that you're proposing today, it's on 3880 Kitsky Lane. Mr. O'Keefe bought the property, has invested, is investing about 1.7 million dollars into the location, putting up a new convenience store, new gas pumps, and some other improvements, including some access improvements that the city wanted. On April 1st, on April 1st, our office filed a state gaming application for that location for seven gaming devices to be located at that location. On April 13th, our office helped Mr. O'Keefe's staff put together the city business license applications for general liquor and then gaming as well. On April 13th, we called the city business license office to inquire about what kind of information they may need, in addition, because Mr. O'Keefe's been licensed so many times with the city. In that conversation, the city staff requested that we separate the liquor and gaming, and advised us that they wouldn't accept the gaming business license application until we had state gaming approval. So based upon that, we instructed Mr. O'Keefe's staff to file the liquor and general business license, which they did on April 26th. So why am I here today? I'm asking for, if this city is, intend on going forward with the moratorium, that this location be exempt, either by its use, because it is a gas station, the gaming is incidental, I've seen the numbers of this location, the projected numbers, it is incidental to the operation, the gas sales are the majority, and with the added convenience store, I think it, those two will probably dominate the sales. Either by the use, because it is that use, or we're asking that the moratorium only affect those who have an application in to state gaming, possibly at some time certain, maybe last week of when you first considered this, or just, we filed on April 1st, so that would be kind of our date when we filed with state gaming. So I'd appreciate your consideration, can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions right now?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mike Alonso.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Mike Alonso with Jones Vargas, and I'm here on behalf of Golden Gaming, Inc. And Golden Gaming, Inc. is a large, is a parent company of a large tavern operation, slot route, and also casino operation in Nevada as well as Colorado. Golden Gaming, Blake Sartini is the principal owner, was part of the coalition with the NRA in southern Nevada, but I think the NRA would acknowledge, help them get the ordinance change in Clark County. The Tavern Association, which Mr. Sartini's a big part of, ultimately made a deal with the NRA down there and helped them get that resolved. The issue here is we have a location in South Meadows, across the street from the Sierra Gold location, where Golden filed the application with the state on February 7th, and so we're caught up in this as well, in terms of, prior to even notice of this happening, the application with the state was submitted. And so although a different use than, than Mr. Sclary's client, something that we are obviously interested in trying to work something out with the city to accommodate this location, given the time that it was filed. The other issue I think I want to raise is, I'm not quite sure what the Gaming Commission is going to do, and the Gaming Commission, since before the Clark County Commission took its action, and subsequent to Clark County taking its action, the members of the Gaming Commission have not been unanimous on some of the locations that have come forward that don't quite fit what was going on in Clark County. So I'm not sure you need the moratorium at this point, if the, if the issue is taverns, if it's something other than that, then maybe you do. But the commission is going to take this up, as you know, and they may not be approving any locations until they take that up. It's a, it's an issue that's been happening every month, and in fact, one location in southern Nevada, I believe it's called Jackpot Jonies, has been moved from one calendar to the next one on the commission's schedule because they weren't sure what they were going to do with it. Anyways, I'd love to work something out with the council, to make this work for everybody in terms of those that filed applications prior to this even being noticed. I think that would be the fair thing to do, and under the circumstances, I don't think there are very many of those locations out there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Question?
Yeah, Mike, in your particular location, I think when I placed this on the agenda, I wasn't, didn't want to hurt the, the gas stations, Mr. Mayor, I think when we did this, it was incidental uses, so I think Mr. Sclary brings up a good point on that one, but Mike, on your particular client, what is the establishment? I mean, is it a similar model to Dottie's? I mean, we're using Dottie's, but there's, there's other locations, Mr. Mayor.
Or is it similar to the Gold, the one across the street from it?
It is not similar to Sierra Gold. I can't tell you that it is similar to Dottie's because I haven't seen, I mean, I think the Dottie's model is different in different places, it probably comes down to the same thing.
Are they going to have food in your location?
There is not going to be a kitchen.
And so it'd just be a slot arcade and a bar?
It would be a bar, well, it would be, it would be a service bar, and it would have slot machines, that's correct.
So.
And let me give you maybe a little bit of background on the lease, they've had this lease in place for some time, given the economy and the fact that they're right across the street at Sierra Gold, they have worked with the landlord to try to mitigate the location, and they have some, made some concessions with the landlord on this style of, of, of bar. And so it is not a Sierra Gold, but I don't want to say, it's probably similar to the Dottie's, I think that would be fair, but I don't.
Very much similar to the Dottie's.
Yeah.
If not identical to Dottie's. And those are some of the things that we're looking at. It can be very favorable to your colleagues with the Golden State Petroleum, but I have a real problem with excluding the one that you're talking about until we get some more notice on what's going on, personally.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. Alonso, when it be mute, I mean, what our moratorium is intended to do is allow for the Gaming Commission to make their recommendations, so if we move forward with the moratorium, your clients in front of Gaming Commission, if they rule that it's, that they're not incidental uses, then really that would have no effect on what the city does. I think, we haven't proposed the timeline, Mr. Mayor, but if we move forward with a ninety-day moratorium, then to me, it would seem like that would give time for Gaming to make their recommendation, aren't they meeting at the end of the month? Because this is exactly what we're trying to avoid is, is having that particular model.
Well, I guess that kind of makes my point, is that the city, as I understand it, and you have to excuse me, I've been in Carson every day, doing something a little different, so, but the city, as I understand it, doesn't have any prohibition now on this location. It's zoned properly, you've got an applicant who has been licensed multiple times across the state and within the city of Reno. So it's not really an issue of whether or not this is prohibited by
No.
the city. It may be, you may be going in that direction, and that would be fine, but as of today, it isn't prohibited within the city. As of today, it isn't prohibited by
The Gaming Commission.
But Sierra Gold, you're saying it's the same owner, Sierra Gold, though, is, is a restaurant use, and, and I think a lot of the, the uses that was pointed out last council meeting with Dottie's in particular, they came in as a restaurant. So it's either, I believe our code, and maybe John Hester can answer this, but Mr. Mayor, I think our code prohibits what's happening now because it has to be an incidental use. So I think it's already prohibited. I guess John.
Are you talking about by city code, or by?
Yeah, by city code, so I'd ask Mr. Hester.
Mr. Hester, or Legal Counsel, come up, Mr. Hester and Legal, come up.
We call them accessory, but what you said is correct.
So it's already in the code that, that, it's not legal, it's not legal by our codes.
It's in the code that it's incidental to a primary use. Now, we have to evaluate when the application comes in as to how we believe it to be incidental or not incidental, whether it's a primary use or not. I certainly don't want to stand here on the basis of the few facts that we've had so far and try to make that determination, or have staff try to make that determination here while we are.
Well, no, and the state's going to describe or define what incidental is, you know, or how it comes around. I personally have a problem with just opening a slot arcade with a bar, and I want to declare something right here before we go apart, I do not own any gaming license in the city of Reno. I forgot to do that at the beginning, I do not own any gaming license in the city of Reno. I do have a, my son, I don't, but my son has a slot arcade at the Alamo Truck Stop and Spark, he does own Topaz Lodge, I have no affiliations with, neither does he, with Fitzgerald's or any gaming operation in the city of Reno, Nevada. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't want to take up a lot more time.
No.
I think, going back to your point, Councilwoman Sforza, the incidental, again, there has to be something, some discussion about whether or not it's incidental, and that's the issue that, I've been doing this long enough in front of Gaming that, we used to have a regulation that it had to be incidental to the primary, primary business. So every applicant would come in and have to show the commission, board and commission through their investigative process, numbers, projections based on food revenues, beverage revenues, whether it was gasoline, if it was a convenience store, a bar, or whatever, and they went through that, and it was very, very difficult because the numbers might not necessarily be accurate, and they may be skewed a certain way because of that test. So I believe in approximately 2000 or 2001, the commission changed the regulation to say, they defined a tavern, a bar, saloon, they defined a convenience store, and I believe it's 2,500 feet, and then whatever you have to have to be a convenience store, grocery store was 10,000 feet and have groceries, a drugstore was a minimum of 10,000 feet and have that. And if you were a tavern, saloon, bar, and they basically kind of throw it back to local code, what that means, we don't have a tavern definition in the city of Reno, but they do in Clark County, in the city of Las Vegas, and North Las Vegas, and Henderson. But if you met the criteria for that definition, fifteen machines were deemed to be incidental to the primary business, because the commission had kind of gotten tired of having to deal with these every single month. With the convenience stores, they basically said it's seven machines would be deemed to be incidental to primary business. Now, I'm not standing up here defending the Dottie's model or anything else, but I do think, you know, when you have a situation just sort of from a fairness standpoint, or legal, you know, what can you do legally to somebody who's got an application on file, especially in a case where I think the city policy, as, as Mr. Sclary pointed out, is, I mean, we could have easily filed the city application at the same time we filed the state gaming application, there's not a whole lot of difference between doing that if you're doing one or the other, but the city staff, I think, has taken a different tact on when you can file for the gaming, because they want it to be closer to when you actually are on an agenda for the Gaming Control Board and the commission.
The problem is, Mike, though, I think you brought up the point that, that the council needs time, and that's why you're making the point for the moratorium, is that we need to define in our code exactly the tavern, the bars, what that, I mean, what, is that an incidental use, and I think we need time to do that along with Gaming Commission's recommendation.
And I, I understand that, and all I'm saying is that, even if you were to agree with me and say, okay, anybody who filed an application prior to whatever the date is, we still may run into an obstacle with the commission. In my client's case, we have an issue with, we have to be, under our lease, we have to be operational by August 1, and then there's some ramifications to us if there's, if we don't meet that August 1 deadline. And so this gets a little bit more serious because this issue with the commission could take longer than ninety days, it could take, you know, they could have hearings in both north and south a couple of times, because this isn't going to be an easy issue for north or south, or rural, it's, obviously it was very controversial in Clark County, and there may be litigation that springs from that change in that, in that code down there, and so I'm just trying to look at something from a fairness standpoint. And so I'm just trying to look at something from a fairness standpoint of, it'd be one thing if we had been given notice of the city council meeting from last week and then we went and filed the state application the very next day. We filed the application in February.
Why hadn't that been heard? Why hadn't it gone through? Because a man like, the owner, has been approved many times and usually doesn't take but 60 to 90 days at the most, and why hadn't it been going through the gaming commission?
Mr. Mayor, it actually, I mean, it's been taking, even on restricteds, for slot route companies, four to six months. I think the commission, the board is short-staffed.
Okay.
On restricteds and, and I think it's taking a while. I mean, they, they have a group called the distressed property group, which takes the ones that are about to shut down or have receivers appointed, they take those first and the other ones that are in normal course take a little bit longer. But there isn't any, I want to assure you, there isn't any reason that we've been slowed down.
You haven't started construction or done anything?
Well, the building's done. The TIs are, are in process. And we've, we've had this under lease and they've been paying rent for a long time trying to work something out with the landlord.
As much as I would like to support you on yours, but you've also put me in a bad position on supporting the other one. Because I, the Golden Gate has done it and they're ready to go and they're, they're filed, they got their gaming app and all that stuff. Mr. Scolari, would you come back up and tell me, when did you file and when are your hearings and stuff like that? Because you've got a building that's built and you're building a building.
Yeah, they're under construction. We filed with state gaming April 1st. We have liquor and general business on file April 26th here with the city. We could get the gaming on file, you know, as early as tomorrow with the city. Projected opening dates, July 15th. Might get pushed back a little bit because of construction, but I have no word yet from gaming control on that.
So a 90-day moratorium wouldn't kill either one of you. I mean, I'd love to help you, but I, I just, if I'm doing it for you, then I've got to do it for everybody and I'm just not ready at this time to open it up for that.
And Mr. Mayor, I understand where you are. I guess the question I have is, is there, I mean, do we know how many we're talking about that filed?
Well, I know that there's 15 being talked about building, doing just what you're talking about in the city of Reno right now.
That have filed applications?
I don't know if they filed applications or not, but I know they've talked about building 15 locations, just like you're talking about.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if the, if we're really talking about a very small number that filed applications. And again, I am not.
How many machines you're talking about? 15?
15.
Yeah. I do know that one of the groups is talking about building 15 locations, similar to what you're designing. Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us, you use the word tavern and that you have a, it will have a service bar, does that mean that if someone wanted to go in just to have a cocktail, would there be a bistro table, a cocktail table for them to sit at and a bar to go to to order their beer or Manhattan?
I believe, I mean, I'm, I'm told it's a service bar. There's a bar where you could get a drink. It's not the full bar that, that you would have at Sierra Gold. It is not that.
But again, the word ancillary is what I think we're all trying to wrestle with here. So that would suggest that if you're a tavern, would someone have the ability to come in and just order a cocktail, not play a slot? Just order a cocktail and be accommodated where they could sit down and pay for just a cocktail?
Absolutely. That is without question.
And what does the business mo, yeah.
Well, they'd have somewhere to sit, but they wouldn't have the traditional bar where you'd sit on a high chair at the bar.
And what does the business model show? How many people will be paying for their drinks versus having them comped while they're playing slots?
I, you know, I can't answer that question. I don't know. I mean, if it's, you know, one of the things that, in Clark County, what ended up happening is they required that eight of the machines in a tavern have to be in the bar top. And then what they did was they, if you didn't have a kitchen, they grandfathered it in. So you'd had a certain period of time, if you were already in the pipeline, to put the kitchen in, but you had to have the eight machines in the bar top. And again, I'm not, I don't have the authority to offer that, but if that's where this is going, if that's the issue on a bar, you know, I, that's what I'm trying to, you know, is there a way to make this work that would be fair to everybody because, you know, we didn't file this in April, we filed this in February?
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Legal counsel and staff, come forward. Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry, wait a minute, we have two people, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, well, this, this, actually, it's for legal anyway. Thanks, Mike. As far as addressing the issue with the, the gas station, because I don't think that was our intent as, as we went through this, can, can we, in this moratorium, can we exclude those uses in the moratorium?
Marilyn Craig, deputy city attorney, you want your moratorium and your resolution leading up to the moratorium to be as clean, precise as you can possibly make it. The more exclusions you make or exceptions to it, the more it is diluted and that is, that makes it much more difficult for, for us to defend. Let me give you an example of, of one of the concerns that I have is that, I believe you heard last time testimony was given to you that Dottie's had, had submitted an application for a gaming license previous and then had withdrawn it before the last meeting. That particular license was submitted to state gaming on March 21st, 2011, and then was withdrawn before the city on April 15th. So we, we know there is at least that one out there. We know there is another person out there who submitted a license on March, or excuse me, April 29th, which would have been after your last meeting. So every time we make an exception, pretty soon, there's nothing left to accept and that's a concern we have to defend this.
But, but my question is more land use.
Land use.
If, if, I mean, if, I'm not talking about the, the bar issue right now, but strictly, you know, if we were, if we wanted to say that this moratorium does not apply to, you know, convenience stores, gas stations, grocery stores, but it does apply to the traditional bar type use?
I think that at that point, you are running a risk of making it difficult, arguably, for us to defend because you're saying, these are clean. Maybe they are and maybe they're not. A convenience store, a gas station. Let me give you an example of someone who decides to put in a gas pump, who says it's available to, to come and get a can of gas to put in your lawnmower. That's my gas station. Okay, and now I'm going to have gaming from that point on. Every one of these are gradations and we have to look at that independently and that's what gives a concern.
Those aren't the areas of code that we're looking at correcting, though. The area of code we're looking at correcting is, is really the bar.
Well.
And how the gaming is, and how gaming is incidental to a bar use. Those are the areas of code that we're trying to, that we want to look at correcting. So I, I want to focus the moratorium on the area of the code that we're trying to.
The, the code defines restricted gaming as incidental to a primary use. And it doesn't go through all of those, you know, I mean, it just says primary use. If you want to exclude those, you, you're in control. You can do what you want. I'm simply saying that every exclusion that you do makes it that much more difficult for us. Now, in terms of the gas station application, I think the name of it was Golden Gate that you just heard about, there may well be some, you know, on a case-by-case basis, that we can say, it was staff who suggested that they would not accept it on April, I'm not sure what, what the date was that he said, on April 13th. And so that may change that, but we would need to look at that on a one-by-one basis. And, but our concern is, is that you so dilute your moratorium that we don't have really much to go forward on because the definition of restricted gaming has to do with incidental to a primary use.
Well, clearly, this is why I'm not a big fan of moratoriums, because I think they have unintended consequences. But I, I think, I think we do need to try to come up with a solution here.
Mr. Gustin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, I think the two gentlemen that made their presentation have, in my one person's view, have two different circumstances. And to me, as we had the presentation in our last meeting and as legal counsel for the, the person that was here, the company that was here, I thought expressly made the comment about incremental or incidental and how that, in my listening to that presentation, that's how that got convoluted. But regardless, that's still to be decided by the, the gaming commission, I believe. I think that's what we're talking about. There's no doubt about the gas station being, that, that gaming being incidental to gas. If you don't believe that, go look at the gas prices and look at them next week and the week after that and it becomes more apparent to me. I think on the other side of it, the other presentation made about the casino that Mr. Alonzo had, I think is a different thing. And I, I'm with the mayor on this part of it because I think it is not incidental. And I think, now, the state may find differently. We still can be more restrictive in that, but I think there are two different circumstances. The gas station certainly is incidental in my viewpoint. Now, like as Ms. Craig said, if that limits our ability to defend it, then so be it. But I think that's really, I, I think it's pretty straightforward and, and I hate that these seem to be so convoluted that we have to keep going down the road and saying, well, we can't do this, we can't do that. That's pretty straightforward to me. The, the other one, I, I think is still in, in flux. I think that's what the gaming commission's trying to decide. Is it, is it incidental to the usage or not? And as well-meaning as it may be, a service bar and, and slot machines, they just don't register to me. They're two different things. They, I mean, the gaming, the amount of coins in on the gaming machine versus a service bar, I can't imagine how those can even be close.
It would seem to me that the question here is the word incidental and we use that in our restricted gaming definition. In order, if you are inclined to allow the Golden State application, it would probably be preferable if you did that on the basis that they had, had inquired of staff, were told not to bring their application forward at that time and that for that reason, that they could bring their application forward. But, but, and then, other than that, everyone would be precluded from restricting, moving forward on new uses for restricted gaming subsequent to, say, 9 o'clock, when the, this particular hearing was noticed on April 29th.
Can I follow up on that?
Just, just.
Is, is there, is there anyone else out there that we've told that to? We've had that same conversation with? And, and just, just also, since you made that comment to, whether it was Mr. Scolari or someone that works for Mr. Scolari, and they represent both, could they have assumed that it applied to both applications?
Well, we'd have to do that, determine that on a fact basis. I did not hear that as a fact. I heard Mr. Scolari say that in terms of Golden Gate. I did not hear that representation made in terms of Goldie. But in terms of, of whether staff has made that representation to others, that is business license and I would turn over the mic to their attorney to speak to that.
Craig Skoff, for the record, from the city attorney's office. In talking with staff, there was one clerk, before this moratorium issue came up, who had a practice of not accepting the applications until gaming had approved them and one who would accept them. So it's possible that on a factual basis, there can be others out there. It simply wasn't a significant issue back in the day that anyone could have anticipated and now it apparently could be. So factually, we don't know.
Yes, Ms. Srazza.
I guess I'd like to ask Marilyn, and I got it, because I believe when Clark County did their moratorium, because I tend to agree with you, we start making exceptions, then what becomes legally defensible, number one, and does that get to our goal? But when they did the moratorium, they did it for everyone, correct?
I can't speak to what Clark County did. I, I don't know. That would be a typical way to approach it, but I couldn't tell you that that's what they did.
And then, when they did that, it was for two reasons, I believe, to come up with their land, the land use, the changes in the code, the eight slots in the bar, the other types of things they were doing. So if we did it, getting back to Councilman Dorch's question, if we did it based on Mr. Scolari having filed the application on behalf of his client for a gas station, but we still added that to the moratorium overall, what's your opinion about that?
My opinion is that if you want to allow that particular application to go forward, then that would seem to me to be appropriate on the basis that, that they offered or made inquiry and were told not to bring it forward and that others have been allowed to bring it forward so that, so that you have some equality between those who attempted to file with the city. Your moratorium goes clear only to the city zoning. It doesn't go to the state or to licensing of an individual to operate these. It goes only to the zoning.
So getting back to that zoning on a convenience store compared to a bar, because I believe you had testified that there was another vendor who came in and, and pulled their, their application before the council's hearing?
That's my understanding, that the testimony you heard at this last hearing was that Dottie's had had an application before the city and had, and that was filed in on March 21st, that was pulled on April 15th. That application, I understand, has also been pulled or, say, withdrawn before the state gaming commission. However, the state gaming commission has put it on their agenda to consider the withdrawal. It would, I would take it from that, that that application then for licensing before the state gaming commission is still viable and they could withdraw their withdrawal if they wanted to at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Azim?
Sorry, to let you sit down. Real quickly, in our code, for the Golden Gate, is that, would that be classified as a convenience store or a service station or what are they filing under?
My, and perhaps, I haven't seen the application. My impression is, is that they're filing that it's as a gas station.
And is our code very clear about what a gas station is? I mean, does it have to like, that's how I think we might be able to make that distinction, that if it's very clear that a gas station, I don't know, has to pump 15,000 gallons of gas a day, I don't know what, what it is, but that may be a clear distinction that we could at least make that exception.
I don't recall a definition of gas station in our code. I, I'll look at Mr. Hester and he's, he's, we're, we're both struggling here a little bit, but I, and I don't particularly recall any kind of particularity, say, X number of gallons or amount of money or anything like that.
So I think if someone's going to go to the expense of putting tanks in the ground and all that, obviously, the seven slot machines are going to be incidental. That, I, I don't know what the definition is, though. Maybe that's what I would need to see.
Well, and, and also incidental to state gaming with respect to licensing a person may in fact be different from your considerations as incidental with respect to zoning concerns. And so that's why, you know, that's why you've got the moratorium, proceeding with the moratorium so as we can get this figured out. If you want to exempt gas stations, I mean, you know, I just need to, to let you know, to warn you that.
I just want to make sure that that was clear, that somebody doesn't say, okay, I'll sell a propane tank every month and there, I'm a gas station.
Well, and, and my example, and maybe it's far-fetched, but no one would have anticipated this argument 10 years ago either about this is a gas station for, where you can come and pump gas for your lawnmowers or your, you know, your ski equipment or whatever. So.
How long a moratorium are we talking about? 60 days?
90 days.
60 to 90 days?
What will happen is we will, if you authorize us to proceed today and, and you proceed with accepting and approving the resolution, then we will go back and bring a moratorium ordinance to the planning commission. It will go the 1st of June in all likelihood and then it will come back to you. So it will take us some period of time before we can get that moratorium ordinance to you. But we would ask you for direction as to how long you want this to last, the moratorium ordinance.
60. Mr. Azim?
On that, if it comes back to us and you, and we say today 90 days, but it takes us 30 days to get to it, can we make that modification later that it would, could be dropped to 60?
We, yes. And what we would do is put in there, subject to. And what we would do is put in there, subject to further determination, so that it gives you some flexibility, because we don't know what's going to happen.
And at that time, we could also see what the definition of gas station is too, so we might be able to make that, when that comes forward, we can see what the planning commission thinks of that. Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay.
I mean, just, just on a discussion, I mean, I have a feeling we're moving forward with this. But I am uncomfortable, at a minimal, using Marilyn's argument for the gas station that they've, that staff advised them not to put that application in and that we can move forward with that application.
But my only problem, and Mr. Scolari, don't take this offensively, because I don't mean it towards you, but that doesn't, there's nothing in writing they told them to do. Do you have that in writing?
But staff just got up and admitted that we do have someone down there that tells them that.
Who from staff did that?
We just had our attorney stand up and tell us that there was a staff member down there telling people that not to put their application in.
I don't have it in writing. It was our paralegal that had the discussion with the clerk.
And I don't mean that as a reference.
But the fact that we filed liquor in general on April 26th, I think, kind of proves the point. But, and I can appreciate the short timeframe. The only thing I'm worried about is if, let's say, our gaming application with the state, they put us on the agenda next month, and we're ready to roll, and we then get to here and we're stuck in a moratorium. That's, that's my fear.
You might be stuck for 15 days.
Because the State Gaming Control Board might look at our application and say, "Look, that, that one's purely incidental. We're not even gonna, you are not going to hold that one up." That's, that's my concern with the gas station.
Well, and if it was the 90 days, the only thing it'd hold you up if you're opening up the 15th, the 90 days from today would be what?
August.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess, what would be the issue, though, if we allowed them to come in, I mean, and then just put it on the rest for that specific use, the gas station, because I think that gets to where we're going.
But if I could, what we just talked about, they can bring that forward in the June thing, and we could exempt them right now. I mean, not right now, but when we all get the definition of what gas station is.
Yeah, but why don't, I mean, why can't we just exempt them now? Let them get their application in? I mean, that's, I mean, I, I mean, can't, don't people put in their applications anyway? We just don't process them? They're actually, I thought we were telling people not to put their applications in based upon that.
I don't know what happens between now and we pass a moratorium.
Come up and explain, counsel.
And Craig Skoff, for the record, in looking into this question, when Mr. Scolari brought it up, we found that at least one person in the business license division had a practice of not accepting applications until they had been approved by the Gaming Control Board. Another one would accept the application and then not process it until it was approved by the Gaming Control Board. So we have had instances going both ways there.
But what are we going to do now if we're looking at a moratorium? Would we tell them, "We'll take your applications, subject to a moratorium being passed," or do we have to process them? What do we have to do?
The resolution that is before you instructs, directs staff not to accept the applications until, through, until and through the moratorium period. So we wouldn't be, if you, if you accept that, I mean, that's just proposed for you.
Well, would it be, I guess if we just said, "We want to accept the applications, but they won't be processed," because we haven't established a moratorium, so I don't know how you say, "We're not going to accept any applications." I don't know, this is what, we've had moratoriums before. Is this how we've done it before? I guess it's the same.
Is Mr. Woodley here?
No, he's, he's not.
Yeah, he's here, he's right there.
Alex Woodley, calling for manager, also in charge of business license. In discussion with staff, my understanding is that in the past, staff have either accepted the application or not accepted it, waiting for the Gaming Commission to approve it. Staff doesn't do, take any action until it's confirmed that gaming has approved it. Then at that point, staff will move forward with moving forward their application. With regards specific to this application and the gas station, in discussion with staff, we did ask Michael Chomp and I, and talk to staff, and unfortunately, we have a different recollection of events of that day, I believe it was April 26th, I'm not sure. But my understanding from staff is that a lady came in representing the gas station, and she submitted her application for the alcohol general, and it also noted on their gaming. And staff specifically asked her, "Would you like to submit your gaming application as well?" And she stated, "No, not at this time."
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, any motions or anything? No public comment? Okay, let's ask for a motion.
I would like to go forward with moratorium. I don't think this is any different than what we did, like, on Wells. Once we started posting that we had an intent, that we had a moratorium, we stopped taking the applications. I do believe that the gas station, I like Councilman Iazzi's suggestion to make sure that this particular application is actually for a gas station, and I think that they should be precluded from this moratorium. However, I think we need it for two reasons. Number one, we need to get the Gaming Commission's ruling on this. But number two, we need to look into our own land use codes and determine, and John's shaking his head, to determine what the primary uses are going to be. I do believe this is a local issue, so I think we need that time in the interim to have those policy discussions and land use discussions on, on these types of issues. So I don't know how we do that, Marilyn, the wording on that. But I think that for, for the gas station use, that's, that's not what we're looking at when somebody puts in the infrastructure to do these things. It is that, when it becomes a primary use.
And what's the definition of incidental?
We're going to be having that conversation a lot, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's, we're going to be working on that in terms of zoning. The state is working on it in terms of licensing.
Right.
I wanted to come back to Councilwoman Iazzi's question and I think also Councilwoman Frazek's question, with how are we going to go forward? Before we get a zoning, or excuse me, a moratorium ordinance adopted, which is going to be six weeks or so down the road, we have presented for you a resolution which directs staff not to accept applications for any new uses that would not preclude a change of ownership because the use is already in place. It would not preclude anything that, where the use is already going on. But it would preclude new uses. So I wanted to draw that to your attention to make sure you're comfortable with that. And that's how we will get through the next six weeks. If you want to exclude gas stations from that, we would need to exclude that from the resolution. We can rewrite it and do that. This was just proposal, just to get to where you wanted to go. And then we'll come forward to this moratorium ordinance. We'll take the planning commission, then bring it back to you, and we'll put it for 90 days with flexibility to extend or shorten, if that's your desire.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Again, I mean, I'm prepared to move forward, but I do think we should exclude the gas station based upon the conversation that they had with staff, asking them to wait to put their application in until they got their state approval. At the end of the day, I really think this whole discussion's going to be mute because I don't think we're going to see a lot from the state until they resolve their issue there. So I think we'll have time to get it done here in the meantime. So I don't, I don't think, I mean, the whole discussion we're having about these licenses, I don't think we're going to see any of these things come forward. A gas station could be the exception. But I don't think you're going to see a lot of taverns or bar licenses come forward until the state addresses their issue of incidental use.
It's my understanding that there's seven or eight of them already on the drawing board for Reno, Nevada.
But I don't disagree with you, Bob, but they've got, still got to get a gaming license from the state, and I don't think the state's going to approve those gaming licenses until they resolve the issue at the state level. So I don't think, and even at that, I still think, you know, if we're a 90-day moratorium, likelihood of these guys getting their licenses within the next 90 days are probably slim, anyway, so. But I do think we should exclude the gas station based on the fact that they had the conversation with staff, and they asked them to wait on, and they asked them to wait until they got their state approval to put their license in.
If I may, Craig Skoff from the city attorney's office, just a point of clarification. Mr. Scolari indicated that somebody had contacted our staff and that a conversation had occurred. Our staff was unable to verify yes or no on that, so we'd kind of like to be able to verify and follow up on that, if that's.
Well, I think he tried to verify, but I think he said policy doesn't, doesn't, the current policy kind of favors what Mr. Scolari's saying.
Yes, it does.
So I'm willing to assume that he's probably accurate.
And you can do that. I just want you to understand that is an assumption. Normally, I would want to recommend interviewing or getting some affidavit or something.
It sounds like that's been done, and there wasn't really any, other than the actual talk at the, when they actually came in to apply, I mean, it doesn't sound to me like anyone really remembered the conversation over the phone.
We don't know all the details or circumstances yet.
Let's move it along. I'll make a motion to approve the moratorium the way staff has outlined with the exemption of gas stations.
Well, you want to just exempt the one that's, that's the one.
Just the one and set the time period? So that would be what the, because I think, as we're reviewing our code, we need to review gas stations as well, with the exception of the one gas station that came in before council moved forward.
Let's just make it clear, it's Golden State Petroleum of Nevada, their application, if you put that on the record.
Golden Gate Petroleum of Nevada.
For the location located at?
3880 Kitsky Lane. So is this also, so does this allow us to, hopefully tomorrow, get the city gaming on file?
Yes.
Sure.
If it passes, that's my motion.
If it passes. Second, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Just because we don't know if by chance there is another gas station out there that would be similarly situated, I think we should broaden the motion to include anyone else with the same circumstances because then we would have a more protectable legal.
Okay. That would be my motion.
Do I have a second? Second, discussion, Mr. Guston.
My only comment, I was going to second, but my only comment is that, that hopefully staff could get to us before next week. Just, just in the off-chance that our, our ordinance on gas stations is so nebulous that the illustration presented by legal counsel could possibly be relevant. I just, we just need to see what, what the, the gas station ordinance says. I think we're going to be fine, but let's see if it isn't. Then, if we can get that, then we, as city council, can put more descriptive language into that ordinance or start that moving. I, that's the only thing I would say.
But Councilman, we also have Mr. Scolari's testimony on the record that it is indeed a gas station.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just saying, what is a gas station? That question Councilman Iazzi asked, is it, could it be one pump that pumps a minimum of 100 gallons a month? I don't know, but it should be more than that to be. My hangup is on the incidental amount or the, you know, that it's not the major portion of the revenue. And I, I'm just unclear from what everybody's saying, and I don't think our definition is defined, so that's all. I'd ask if you want to email it to me or to the other council members, what our ordinance says about a gas station, that would, that would suffice for me.
There's probably any gas station that's been built is anywhere from $2 to $4 million right now, so I would think that those things could be worked out. I have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Resolution, A71.
Resolution directing staff to reject applications, and I'm adding in the following words for the record, "As provided herein, for new land uses proposing 15 or fewer slot machines or privileged gaming licenses involving such proposed uses commencing immediately and continuing through the duration of the moratorium ordinances, prohibiting 15 or fewer slot machines and/or the issuance of privileged gaming licenses involving such proposed uses and matters properly relating thereto."
Move to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, in addition, we will have to add some language to the text of the resolution that would provide the exemption that was in the last motion.
Move to adopt as amended.
And if I didn't say it, I'm sorry, resolution 7577.
Okay. Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up on Councilman Guston's question. I think what we will do is take a look at the building permit plans that are permitted for the gas station and try to put that into some, you know, this many pumps and things like that. Anything less than that, we will not consider, we will consider it.
Bring it back to us so we can discuss.
We'll consider, what am I trying to say? If it has that much of an operation of a gas station or more, we'll consider gaming an incidental use. If it's less, we won't.
If it looks like it does and quite like, okay.
If that helps.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hester. Okay, agenda item AA, the appointment of the Building Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee.
Yeah, first, we have to move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Discussion, why?
Because under the Building Enterprise Committee rules, they're only eligible for a, two full consecutive terms, and so.
So you want to suspend the rules of the Building Enterprise, not the rules of the council?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll still second it.
We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Councilman?
I would move to appoint Mark Sullivan, Craig Wilcutt, Art Spurber, and Bill Miller.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, we are adjourned.